That is.
Welcome to the fourteenth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please turn your cell phones completely off. Even having your cell phones on vibrate will interfere with the tape recording of this proceedings. When addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name clearly and to speak into the microphones. While going on to um our agenda commissioners, I see there's some minutes to approve.
Yes, Vice Chair. Like to make a motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the third liquor commission meeting dated. Seven seventeen two thousand twenty five.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the third meeting. It is seven seventeen twenty twenty five. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. The minutes are approved. Moving on to public hearings, calling agenda item number one, application number two five dash zero zero seven three two from I E S. Retail LLC VBA Fugue.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair. Members of the Commission, Greg Nisho, authorized agent appearing on behalf of the applicant to my right is Christopher Martinez. Operations manager. I give in the spelling of his name to the here's reported prior to the start of today's hearing. Again, no changes to the investigator's report.
Mister Chen.
Thank you, Mister Vice Chair and Commissioners. This application received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met the statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the August seventh preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Vice Chair Hollinger prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to either testify for or against applicant uh gentle item number one, application number two five dash zero zero seven three two? Seeing none, Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Like to make a motion to accept application number two five dash zero zero seven three two. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero zero seven three two. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero zero seven three two is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, going on to uh special licenses, calling agenda item number two. Application number two six dash zero zero four six five dash one. Through two six dash zero zero four six five dash one two two from T P O K Liquor.
Uh good afternoon, Vice Chair Hollinger and members of the Commission, Neil Gota. Appearing on behalf of T P O K Liquor LLC. Uh applicant would request a continuance to October twenty third if available. To give applicant more time to solidify its liquor service plan.
So Mister Gota, the problem will be currently we do not have a meeting scheduled for October twenty third. There is either the sixteenth or the thirtieth, I believe, on our calendar.
Could we request, I I believe, October seventeen? Is that sixteen, sorry, sixteen, sixteen?
Okay, so do we need to have a motion to?
Uh it is, that's how I would say yes.
Okay, so if we can have a motion.
I'll make a motion for a continuance of. App agenda item number two, application numbers two six dash zero zero four six five dash one to two six. Dash zero zero four six five two dash one two two inclusive. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to um. Been moved and seconded to have a continuance for applications two six dash zero zero four six five dash one. Through two six dash zero zero four six five dash one two two to October sixteenth. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. This will be continued to October sixteenth.
Thank you very much.
Okay, continuing on, calling agenda item number three, application number two six dash zero zero five six six. From Rocky Mountain Ramble LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Give me statement, spell your name for the record, please.
This is Martin J Romero. M A R T I N R O M E R O.
Walk us through the event.
Yeah, since can you walk us through the event that you have here?
Uh yes, sir. Uh the dates of October eighteenth and nineteenth. Um we have doors opening at three P M to ten P M at Bishop Museum. Uh we're expecting to achieve around four thousand attendees. Um it is an all ages event. Um we will have local vendors with food, um craft, um and we also will be serving alcohol. Um we have uh local security hybrid um and um. Other uh big vendors that Bishop Museum has 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 catered to us. Um we. We're looking to have an integrated all ages event. Go out with a. Good, good time.
So looking through your um plan. I see you're gonna ban twenty or anyone twenty one and over. And then anyone under twenty one is gonna have a black X. So you're putting that on their hand, their arm?
Uh their hands, sir. And uh wristbanding will only be for security. To be able to get a drink, you will have to show your ID at every purchase.
Okay. Okay.
Um as you're walking around, you won't be able to have a drink in your hand if you do not have a wristband.
Okay. The only thing I would suggest, and this isn't going to change my determination either way. Instead of a black X, you might wanna look to find a different color wristband or something that would identify only because. Xs can transfer from people to people and if somehow it gets transferred to someone that does have a wristband that's twenty one, you're going to have. Some situations happening and we just wanna make sure everybody's. Yeah, delineated, so.
Typically standard practice.
Um other than that, Commissioners, any questions or comments or a type of action?
So Mister Romero.
Yes, sir.
Permitted areas. And how secure is that for alcohol consumption?
So not only does Bishop Museum have uh brick and mortar fencing and buildings. We also are going to be integrating uh bike barricade and extra fencing. Um also, you know, supplying security. As well as the the Bishop Museum is gonna have people patrolling the parking lot, making sure there's no one tailgating. Um you know, it is, it is a pretty uh lockdown facility in general. Uh and we're gonna make it a little bit more safe.
Okay, cuz I was just thinking if you have like five thousand attendees.
So initially, we had, we had hoped to get to five thousand. Um we are currently, you know. Not gonna get there. Um I had put an amendment on there as four thousand. Uh and we're hoping to to get around there. Um and and it is, is, is a a pretty big park. Uh we're looking at, you know, almost two soccer fields.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why I was kinda concerned about it. Right, thank you.
Sir.
I see you, um sir Romero, so you have twenty five to thirty uh scheduled security personnel from a private security?
Yes, sir.
Are are you thinking about including any off duty kind of officers?
Since, since the initial um registration, we had hired sheriffs. So there'll be sheriff there thirty minutes prior to gates, three of them, and thirty minutes after gates close.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir.
Only last question I'll ask is have you checked with um? Bishop Museum, them correct? Um your your location, if they can leave cars there if they need to?
Yes, sir. We are on a policy of uh if someone is too intoxicated. They are more than welcome to leave their vehicle there. Obviously, we don't want to um. Have a bunch of vehicles there, but we we want everyone to have a safe way.
Sounds good. I have no other questions.
Make a motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero five six six. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero five six six. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two six dash zero zero five six six is approved. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling agenda item number four, applications number two six dash zero zero five seven seven one. Through two five dot, nope, two six dash zero zero five seven seven dash one two one from Haleeva Bottle Shop LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Christina Ohira on behalf of the applicant. Uh my client is on the mainland today, so he's not able to make it. We don't have any um corrections to the investigative report as supplemented.
Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
If we make a motion to approve application numbers two six dash zero zero five seven seven dash one to two six dash zero zero five seven seven dash one two one inclusive. Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve applications number two six dash zero zero five seven seven dash one. Through two six dash zero zero five seven seven dash one two inclusively. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Applications number two six dash zero zero five seven seven dash one through two six dash zero zero five seven seven dash one two one are approved. We're going to go out of order and call agenda item number eight. In seconds, application number. Two six dash zero zero five seven eight from Haleeva Bottle Shop LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Christina Ohira on behalf of the applicant, and we don't have any changes to the investigative report.
This is just a temporary reduction, correct, for the dates that we just talked about because of the prior one, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioners, any farm, uh any questions or a form of action?
No questions.
Um like to make a motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero five seven eight. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero zero five seven eight. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two six dash zero zero five seventy is approved. Okay, going back on to our regular agenda items. Going to number, agenda item number five, application number two six dash zero zero six five two from Hispanic. Chamber of Commerce Hawaii.
Good afternoon. Uh my name is Barbara DeLuca, President on behalf of the Hispanic Chamber Commerce Hawaii.
So Luca, can you walk us through your event, please?
Sure, so Thursday, October ninth, we're gonna have a networking event. At Island Pacific Academy. Um celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Uh we have some entertainment and food trucks and um we do have a networking area that's blocked off. For um that we'll be serving two drink tickets to our members.
Yeah.
And we do have wristbands.
Okay. How many people are you expecting at the event?
Maybe one hundred and one fifty.
Okay. All right, oh Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Probably be identifying adults who are can drink.
Uh we'll be carding them and they have a a wristband. And they, we have a special networking area that you cannot leave, so we have um a person there monitoring.
So only those checked will have wristbands.
Right. Only those checked?
Only those individuals who have their IDs checked?
Um no, if uh. You you have to buy a ticket and you're already registered, so when you check in to get your name badge, we're gonna um card you and give you a wristband. Just to make sure whether you're drinking or not.
Any security?
No, no, it's a three hour event, five to eight.
Okay, no other questions. Make a motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero six five two. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero six five two. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two six dash zero zero six five two is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number six, application number two six dash zero zero six five six from the Foundation of the Rotary Club of Honolulu.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing us.
If you can both state your name for the record.
My name is Thomas Coyne. I am the. Media past president of the Rotary Club of Honolulu.
Ryan Conchin, owner of Curious Productions, a promoter.
Can the both of you walk us through your event, please?
Sure.
Can you walk us through your event?
Sure, um so this is a um. Benefit for the Rotary Club of Honolulu. This is probably our twelve or thirteenth event together. Um this one is gonna be on Halloween night at Bishop Museum. Um pretty much the same format as a past ten or eleven. It's gonna be a sampling event. Um with about eighty to a hundred different um products. Everyone gets a glass when they walk in. It's a small five ounce pour. Um we're probably expecting around twelve hundred to eighteen hundred people. Um the, a lot of people kind of. Hinders the overconsumption of alcohol because there's lines for everything, so um also our security is really good at seeing people that are too inebriated and um. Escorting them out as well. Um so if we have about twelve to twelve hundred to eighteen hundred, we're probably gonna have about ten officers. Um I think for this one, we're not using off duty because they said they don't work beer events, so we're just gonna use private security for the outside.
Commissioners, any question?
They walk in, they're given a glass.
Yeah, it's like a small five ounce glass.
Yeah, everybody gets one.
Correct, it's a twenty one over event.
Twenty one over, then all all minors will be allowed to enter. I can make a motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero six five six. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero six five six. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two six dash zero zero six five six is approved.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seven, application number two six dash zero zero six one four from the Pig and Lady LLC.
Afternoon, um to my right is the that the owner Andrew Lee, spelled L E. He is President with Council Wayne Luke. We have no changes to the investigation.
Basically a catering license, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Make a motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero six one four. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero six one four. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two six dash zero zero six one four is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we'll be moving on in our own agenda to adjudications. So we're gonna um, we'll call the first one and then um each party can make their um record. Um calling under adjudications, calling agenda item number one, Miley's Thai Bistro. L C V two zero two four dash zero zero eight four.
Her name is LaLa Lorenz. From Miley's Thai Bistro.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair Commissioners, Clickwianton Deputy Corporation Council. Thank you.
Ms Lorenz, um have you had a chance to to read the allegations? And if so, how would you wish to plead? Uh you can plead. Admit to the allegations, deny the allegations, or plead no contest to the allegations.
I plead no contest to the allegation.
Uh would you like to hear the reading of the charges or would you like to waive the reading of the hearing of the charges?
Um. I would like to hear them.
Okay.
In this case, honor about August fifteenth twenty twenty four in the city in County of Honolulu. State of Hawaii licensee failed to ensure that its employee Jalen Pink's. Who is required to be registered with the commission. Have his certificate of registration for the license premises readily available for inspection while on duty in violation of rule. Three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point five E of the rules of the liquor commission of the city in County of Honolulu.
Well, the plea of no contest. Okay, uh motion to accept the plea of no contest.
Make a motion to accept the plea of no contest. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept a plea of no contest. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A plea of no contest is accepted.
Also.
This is the first violation with a recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Ms Lorenz, any, any explanation or anything you would wanna share on?
Uh well, I would like to share that I wasn't a manager working at the restaurant at that location yet. So I, I'm only hearing from the accounts from the managers that were on duty. Um. I don't know what else to say except that uh apologetically, you know, that should never have happened. Uh he no longer works with us anymore. We have since fired him uh last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're gonna make sure that this doesn't happen again.
This will never happen. This has never happened before, so we were very disappointed. Very disappointed.
Make a motion to accept the fine of three hundred dollars.
Second.
Wait, hold on, sorry. Right, was it three fifty?
Sorry, I'm sorry, three fifty. Thank you. For three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Um a um three hundred and fifty dollar fine will be assessed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number ten, A and G Bar and Grill, L C V two zero two four dash zero one zero seven.
Yes, may the recorders like Wayne Luke as counsel for the licensee, we waive reading of the. Of the charges into a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea of no contest?
Make a motion to accept the plea of no contest. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept a a plea of no contest. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none. A plea of no contest is accepted.
Also.
So this was a violation for failure to maintain complete and accurate records to find accurate uh G L S report. There was a violation of the same rule that occurred on June thirtieth twenty twenty. It's like twenty twenty. Uh there, and the licensee was fined five hundred dollars at that time, so this would be a second violation with a recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars.
Je l'up.
No contest.
No, okay. Motion to accept the fine of seven hundred fifty dollars?
Like make a motion to accept the fine of seven hundred fifty dollars. Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, a recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars is approved for agenda item number ten.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eleven. Sino L C V two five dash zero zero two three.
Hello. Please state your name for the record.
Jin Gong.
Yeah. Um would you like to have the reading of the charges?
Yeah.
Okay.
Honor about Ju- January fourteenth twenty twenty five in the city in County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensee failed to have a duly registered manager in active charge of the licensed premises. During the time the establishment is licensed itself to serve liquor in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash. Thirty eight point nine A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city in County of Honolulu.
So you said Mister Han. Oh, yeah. Would you like to accept the charges?
Yes.
Okay, or accept, deny, or plead no contest. Uh no contest, no contest, yes. Uh motion to accept the plea of no contest?
Make a motion to accept the plea of no contest. Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve in plea of no contest for agenda item number eleven. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, a plea of no contest is accepted.
Awesome.
First violation with the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Sir Hong, a- any explanation or on this?
Uh we we have multiple, we have like five people with blue cards, but um it was just bad timing. Uh my manager had to leave and come back and it was an emergency and it was it was at the wrong time. Uh okay, we'll we'll make sure that someone's always there. Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Five hundred, yeah. Motion to accept the fine of five hundred dollars?
Make a motion to accept the fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Recommended five of five hundred dollars will be assessed for agenda item number eleven. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling agenda item number twelve, Bar Leather Apron, L C V two five dash zero zero two four.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Anthony Suetsugu for Bar Leather Apron. We uh waive reading of the charges and like the inter plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea of no contest?
I make a motion to accept the plea of no contest. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a plea of no contest. Is you're pleading no contest for both charges one and charges two?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for.
No, any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. An exception of a plea of no contest for charge one and charge two is accepted.
At the council, please be recommendation.
So charge one is uh no time cards. That's a first violation with a recommended fine of two fifty. The charge two is for employee registration. That's also a first violation with a recommended fine of three fifty. Total uh fine being recommended is six hundred dollars.
Yes, sir, so it took a any explanation on on this?
Um for the employee, uh she. Works for another location of theirs and she was just getting appointed to the space, so she wasn't actually uh working at the time, but. They've gone over that and now anyone who's gonna be there and go in the back or do anything of the sort is gonna have their card prior to doing that. And for the time card, it just wasn't filled in completely and uh they've retrained and they're gonna make sure that that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Make a motion to accept the recommended fine of six hundred dollars.
Have a motion to accept the recommended fine of six hundred dollars.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of six hundred dollars for agenda item number. Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of six hundred dollars for agenda item number twelve, charges one and charge two. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A charge of, a um, fine of six hundred dollars will be assessed for agenda item number twelve, charges one and two.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirteen, Soju Bang, LCV two zero two five dash zero zero two eight.
As the record reflect, Wayne Luke is attorney for the licensee. Per agreement with counsel, we're requesting a continuance.
We need a motion on that. No, no, okay.
Yeah, just for the record, uh, October thirtieth is the only date I cannot be present.
Okay.
If we could just continue to next available, we'll work it out.
Okay, thank you. So no action needed. Okay, thank you, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lu, it will be moved to next available.
Yep, next available.
Uh, calling agenda item number fourteen, three, thirty-six sixty on the rise, LCV two zero two five dash zero zero two nine.
Good afternoon, question? Name is Russell Siu.
Mr. Siu, uh, would you like to hear the reading of the charges or waive reading of the charges? Would you like counsel to?
I'll save the card, I'll waive the reading.
Okay. Would you like to enter a plea? You can either uh, accept the allegations, deny, or plead no contest? Motion to accept the plea of no contest?
Make a motion to accept the plea of no contest, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a plea of no contest for agenda item number fourteen. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A plea of no contest will be accepted for agenda item number fourteen.
Counsel recommended fine?
This is for um, alterations without prior approval. First violation, recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Does this see you any comments to the situation?
I have already corrected it with Yasu, so.
Okay, so, motion to uh, accept the fine of five hundred dollars?
Make a motion to accept the fine of five hundred dollars, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number fourteen. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A recommended fine of five hundred dollars will be imposed for agenda item number fourteen. Calling agenda item number fifteen, Cafe Gongnam Karaoke. LCV two zero two five dash zero zero three zero.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Richard Johnson. I'm standing here for my boss, Jacqueline Park. Um, can I just hear the charges just to reiterate?
Honor about November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four in the city in County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii licensee made physical alterations within its licensed premises. To it altering the sizes of the karaoke rooms, changing the men's restroom into a storage room. And reducing the size of the women's restroom and making it into an employee restroom without the prior written approval of the liquor commission in violation of rule. Three dash eighty-three dash sixty-two A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city in County of Honolulu.
Mr. Johnson, would you like to accept the charge, deny the?
I would actually like to deny, uh, just because all these changes were made uh, before me actually took over.
Hold on, okay. So if you, if you're pleading denying the charge. You don't need to say any more than that, cuz we're gonna reschedule you to a um, different time for a contested hearing case. Okay, cuz you're denying, so that means we have to do a contested hearing for that. Okay, so, yeah, you can read. Yeah, you can read through this.
Yeah, okay.
So he's gonna read some information for you, and then there'll also be a letter sent to you or to your boss, okay?
Yeah, so. So since you have pled no, not guilty and wish to return for a contested hearing, there are a few procedures that the commission requires you to follow. First, seven days before the contested hearing, both the prosecution and the licensee must disclose to each other. Their proposed exhibits. Exhibits that are not timely disclosed, disclosed may not be considered at the contested hearing. Secondly, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and the proposed testimony. Of each witness seven days before the contested hearing. Witnesses that are not timely disclosed may not be allowed to testify at the contested hearing. And then third, each party's exhibit must be uploaded to the liquor commission's Google Drive. By four P M on the Wednesday before the contested hearing. Information on how that can be accomplished will be provided to the parties and will be available on the liquor commission's website shortly. If you have physical evidence that cannot be uploaded to the Google Drive, please be sure to let both the liquor commission and the other party know. As a reminder to each party, personal information such as medical information, social security numbers, birth dates, bank account numbers. Must be redacted by the party whose exhibit contains that information.
So I think before we continue, I do also think we need to um, have a motion to accept the plea of denying the charge.
Request your motion to accept the plea of denying the charge?
I will make a motion to accept the plea of denying the charge, second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to accept a plea of denying the charge for agenda item number fifteen. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, um, a plea of denied the charge for agenda um, number fifteen is accepted. So then that would be where that information he just read to you and they'll work with you and counsel to schedule for the next available.
Sure, uh, do I have to stay back or?
They're gonna contact you with the information.
Oh, for today, yeah, okay, sounds good. Yeah, thank you much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number sixteen, ABC Store number ninety-one, LCV two zero two five dash zero zero three one.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is LaVella Romaldo, authorized agent for ABC Stores, I'm in S L T D. Um, we entered a plea of no contest.
For both the charges?
Actually, if I could, I think we would like to just proceed with charge number one for today and ask and request that the other one be continued to the next available.
I'm sorry, can, can you pronounce your last name again?
Romaldo.
Romaldo.
Okay, so, I think, so I might not be correct, but the question I would have is, um. So, uh, the hard part is, I think we would have to confirm that they're agreeable to doing the second one on a separate date. Because they are both together on our agenda, or am I incorrect?
Um, I did confer previously prior to this, so um, just in our honesty, I think we're gonna actually look at the second charge to see if we. Can actually maybe get it discussed.
Okay, okay.
So, that, that's the reason, so we would like to proceed today on charge number one, and I can read that in the record if that makes it clear.
Please, yeah, um, as long as you're all right with it being read on the record, cuz you do have the right to waive, waive reading of the charges.
Um, that's fine, we can.
Okay.
So just to be clear, for charge one, it's honor about October third, twenty twenty-four, in the city in County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii. Licensee extended the area of the licensed premises to it, adding approximately seven hundred forty-one feet without the prior permission of the liquor commission. In violation of section two eighty-one dash sixty-two of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Resem, Romaldo, you, your, your plea for this, charge number one?
No contest.
No contest. Motion to accept the plea of no contest?
Make a motion to accept the plea of no contest and charge number one, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a plea of no contest for uh, charge number one for agenda item number sixteen. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A charge of no contest is accepted for agenda item number sixteen, charge number one.
Also recommended fine?
This is the first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Romaldo, any comments on, on, on the matter?
Um, I mean, I think it was just communication within our company and I think we've got it all figured out and making sure every. But what stays on top and submits the right documentation.
Motion to approve a fine of five hundred dollars?
Make a motion to approve a fine of five hundred dollars, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number sixteen, charge number one. Any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Recommended fine of five hundred dollars will be assessed for agenda item number sixteen, charge number one. And then for charge number two?
Could we make a request to continue that to the next available?
Okay, do we need a motion to split the two? No, okay. So we will be moving the charge number two to the next available hearing date.
Okay, thank you.
So, counsel?
Yes.
Should you find that the charge is gonna be dismissed, we still need to come back then?
I think we're gonna try to do in, in internally via a memo and try to um, get it taken care of before the next available.
Okay, great, thank you.
We don't want her to have to come back for that, that's the, okay, reason.
Thank you, thank you.
But I think she's still gotta do seventeen.
Yeah, we have one more, one more agenda item number seventeen. Uh, agenda item, calling agenda item number seventeen, ABC Store number ninety-one, LCV two zero two five dash zero zero three two.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is LaVella Romaldo, authorized agent for ABC Stores, I'm in S L T.
And if this one, could we also continue this into, um, the next available as well, okay?
Okay, so we'll continue agenda item number seventeen to the next available.
No action, right?
Yeah, no action taken, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number seventeen, Hilton Hawaiian Village, LCV two zero two five dash zero zero three three.
Good afternoon, it's the chair members of the commission, Robert Weoka, on behalf of Hilton Hawaiian Village. Uh, we have been discussing this matter with corporation counsel and we have no objection to a continuance.
That's fair, we, we would also like to request that this be continued.
Okay, we'll be um, requesting to continue agenda item next eighteen to the next available date. Calling agenda item number, oh, sorry, thank you. Calling agenda item number nineteen, Back to Vegas, LCV two zero two five dash zero zero three seven.
If I may, commissioners, uh, Mr. Keith Kiu Chi did contact me and asked that. Uh, he wouldn't be available, so he asked to continue this, and I said I would make that request of the commission, so we would like to request that this be continued to the next available.
And move, uh, we'll be moving agenda item number nineteen to the next available hearing date. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Done with adjudications, moving on to other business. Calling agenda item number twenty, Liquor Administrator, Administrative Matters.
Good afternoon, commissioner, South Tilos Administrator, Honolulu Liquor Commission. I'd like to provide a couple of updates for you, depending on your mind, um. Regarding our efforts to transfer our, our system to the cloud. Uh, there have been a couple of developments that bode well for it moving forward and maybe wouldn't done this, this fiscal year. Uh, first of all, uh, a request for independent services contract was approved. So I think that, that'd make things a little bit easier, but more importantly, uh, resolution twenty-five dash two seven eight. Which uh, allows H L C to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from current expense to equipment was approved by the city council. The importance of that is that uh, when, when the, our vendor approached us about transitioning L C I S to the cloud. Uh, they, they, they would be, uh, the cost of replatforming L C I S would be borne by the vendor. And late, and H L C would be responsible for the cost, cost of migrating system data to, to the cloud. So I think having that available will, 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 will help uh, move this forward. Second of all, uh, over the last few weeks, H L C has been procuring smartphones for field services, uh. Branch personnel in anticipation of having the electronic V R geolocation history applications available. That way they can, they can, they can query uh, uh, our system and, and, and then we can also track their, their, their movements. Um, a little bit of a buff, H I A, H, H G A notified H L C. But they're in the process, they, they are in the process of reviewing randomized inspection, electronic V, V R, geolocation history. And mandatory G B T Q plus policies, uh, but they've committed, uh, and they've committed to providing answers to questions that. Part, part and parcel of the consultation, hopefully, uh, we'll be able to uh. Deal with those questions or, or, or comments that they have and, and, and move that, move that, move those uh, policies forward. Uh, I think more importantly, uh, production versions of both the randomized routine inspection. Uh, as well as steel, trying to be our geolocation history apps are with H L C and we are testing. Uh, to identify issues and have them addressed prior to acceptance of the applications. Uh, just, just a couple of examples for you to put things in context. Uh, we found some issues when, when uh, with regard to the uh, inspection scheduler. We found some issues when switching from districts uh, to districts from zip codes, uh, so. Our vendor is working on that and hopefully they'll do remedy, and I think just as, as we look at the, uh, at the. Uh, about how we report, of course, there are fewer districts than zip codes, uh, uh, and so that's gonna change. Additionally, uh, there may be some additional changes in terms of the number of normal inspections that are conducted. As we now begin to uh, place, uh, we talked about getting more granular about the, the, the types of that, uh, inspections. So things like uh, shoulder caps, you know, after hours inspections. They may be, they, they may not be counted in that, in, in the normal inspection category anymore. And so that will probably reduce the, 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 the number of those inspections moving uh, uh, moving forward. So just to want to be aware of some of the things that may happen. Also, for us, the geolocation seems to be working. Uh, but needs to be tested over a greater, I mean, it's just been tested around this, the, the office, but now hopefully. Uh, it'll be tested out in the field and we'll be able to see what the, what the history is like. And with that, I'm open to any questions, shouldn't we?
Alright, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-one, Liquor Commission announcements, any announcements?